Good evening. Special meeting of the Los Gatos Town Council of June 3rd is called to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Risto?
Here.
Councilmember Reni?
Here.
Councilmember Badami?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Hudes?
Here. Thank you. And so tonight, we have, in a special meeting, we have only one item on the agenda. And the first item is the hearing itself. And so we will take verbal communications, which is, in this case, verbal is only permitted on the item that's on the agenda. For people who've indicated that they want to speak on Agenda 1, they can speak then instead of now. Is that correct?
Correct. You can just have them all speak during the item.
Okay. I think that would be the best flow. So what we'll do is we'll have a staff report, and then the applicant will have five minutes. Of course, council can ask clarifying questions during, right after the staff report, or after the applicant's presentation. And then we will go to public comment. And so anyone who would like to comment on this item can fill a card, and you'll have three minutes apiece. And then we'll close with three minutes from the applicant again. And then we will close the public portion, and we'll go into deliberation. So I hope that makes sense, and we'll try to move this along. And so let's start right now with our staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. I'd like to have the town attorney start to provide a background on the regulatory framework that's applicable to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a brief overview of Senate Bill 330 and State Density Bonus Law. Next slide, please. As the council will recall, Senate Bill 330 amended the government code to set up a process for applicants to file what's called a Senate Bill 330 preliminary application. Next slide, please. When a complete preliminary application has been submitted, the applicant vests to the town's development standards that were in place at the time that the preliminary application was deemed submitted. Next slide. Next slide. So this project, while it's an SB 330 project, is relying on state density bonus law rather than the builder's remedy. Next slide. State density bonus law is codified at Government Code Section 65915 and following. It's intended to incentivize the production of affordable housing. And so when an applicant meets specified levels of affordability, the applicants are eligible for density bonuses, a certain number of incentives or concessions, and unlimited waivers. Next slide, please. This particular applicant is not seeking to use the density bonus. It's an interesting fact that the state density bonus law doesn't require applicants to actually increase their density, but when the affordable housing element is included, applicants are permitted to ask to use incentives, concessions, and waivers. Next slide, please. So incentives and concessions are intended to be things that will reduce the cost to produce the housing, and so they are defined to include reduction in site development standards or modifications of zoning code requirements. The most common form of these are deviations from the town's setback requirement. Next slide, please. Another incentive or concession is the approval of mixed-use housing, and then finally, any other incentives or concession that will result in a cost reduction for the project. Next slide, please. In addition to incentives and concessions, state density bonus law projects can ask for waivers. They can ask for waivers of development standards that would physically preclude the proposed development at the allowable densities or with the permitted concessions or incentives. And so that is the overview, and I'm available for questions as they come up.
I had one question. In the staff report, there's a discussion about builder's remedy. And I understand that this application does not invoke builder's remedy. Is that correct?
That is correct. The way the statute is written is the builder's remedy will arise at the time that the town makes a decision on a project. So for instance, if the town were to deny a project, any applicant could at that point say, they could allege that the town had violated the State Housing Accountability Act. And so the town is prescribed by those five reasons to deny a project that's subject to the Housing Accountability Act.
So if the applicant were denied, they could simply go through that process and resubmit under builder's remedy?
The statute doesn't require that an applicant state that they're applying under the builder's remedy at the time of application. It's a statute that they can raise with the town at the point at which the decision is made or after a decision is made.
So this project hasn't explicitly waived their right to builder's remedy?
That's correct.
So really, I see a distinction without a difference, meaning that it's being, they say that they're not invoking builder's remedy, but they can if they choose to, correct?
That's correct. But the applicant, some applicants need to reference the builder's remedy at the inception of their project, and some applicants are able to get the changes that they need through state density bonus law.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to clarify because it's been purported that builder's remedy doesn't come into effect, but it could easily. Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. Why don't we, I actually have quite a few questions about SEQA, but I think we'll wait until we hear from the applicant. And so if the applicant would like to come forward, Ms. Needing, Phil Kerr, Gary Black, you have five minutes among you, and please, please go ahead. And then you may have some questions from council members along the way.
Mr. Mayor, may I just raise a point of order?
Yeah.
Do you want to hear the staff presentation before opening the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we, that was it from the town attorney.
No, there's a second piece from the county.
Then let's hear that first, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the applicant is requesting approval to demolish the existing commercial structures on-site and construct a multifamily live-work development. The application's being processed, as previously discussed, under Senate Bill 330 and qualifies for one concession and waivers under density bonus law. At this time, the applicant has not invoked the builder's remedy. The property is included in the site's inventory of the housing element and is zoned CH with the HEOS overlay. The 1.56 acre site would be developed with 55 units distributed among five separate buildings. Eight of the units would be designated as below-market price units consistent with state law and town requirements. New private alleys would provide circulation through the site, taking access from two locations on the east side of Garden Lane. A third driveway along Garden Lane would provide access to a guest parking area connecting to the interior of the development through pedestrian pathways. Only pedestrian access would remain on Los Gatos Boulevard to the site. The applicant has implemented the parking requirements provided through density bonus law, which requires 79 spaces be provided on-site. The project includes 88 spaces within the private garages and nine additional guest spaces. The three-story buildings would include studio, two, and three-bedroom floor plans. Forty-five of the units would include private garages. Eight studios and two two-bedroom units would not include a garage. The maximum height of the buildings would be 45 feet, which is the maximum allowed in the HEOS overlay zone, and a waiver is not requested to building height. Four units are designated as live-work units. The town code currently does not provide a definition for live-work units, and the applicant has provided a discussion on these units and their materials. The applicant requests a concession through density bonus law to the characteristics of BMP unit requirements by the town. A number of waivers are also requested, as detailed in the applicant's letter, for things like setbacks, driveway depths, garage widths, parking, bike parking, excuse me, and several objective design standards. The applicant has provided written justification to the requested concession and waivers addressing the required findings for each. The project was evaluated pursuant to no-net-loss law, and it was found that the capacity of the remaining sites in the housing element is adequate to meet the town's remaining arena. Therefore, the no-net-loss findings can be made, and the town's not required to identify additional sites to accommodate the arena as a result of this project. A modified initial study checklist was prepared pursuant to SEQA guidelines identifying the potential environmental impacts of the proposed project. The initial study included several project-level technical reports that were peer-reviewed by the town and its consultants. The checklist did not identify any cumulative impacts beyond those discussed in the EIR for the general plan, and as such, the SEQA document concluded that the project's environmental impacts have been adequately considered through the general plan EIR pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section 15168. No additional environmental review is necessary. On April 23rd, the Planning Commission considered the project and voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the council with the recommendation that the applicant work with staff to consider further complying with the recommendations of the town's consulting architect and an adjunct recommendation that the town council direct staff to develop a method to study the cumulative impacts of all SB 330 projects. A discussion on these recommendations in the applicant's response is included in your staff report. Staff recommends that the council accept the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt a resolution making the required findings and approving the applications subject to the conditions of approval. I will note a small correction to the draft resolution included as attachment to. Under SEQA Section on Page 2, the reference to, SEQA Section 15183 is in error. That should state 15162. To clarify, this project is not requiring, relying on SEQA Section 15183. This correction will be made prior to finalizing the resolution. Lastly, a desk item was distributed ahead of tonight's meeting. In addition to planning staff, the town's environmental consultant is in attendance, and along with staff from the Parks and Public Works Department. This concludes my presentation, and we are available to support your discussion.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. Thank you for that comprehensive and concise report. Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Sorry, I do have one. Quick question, and I think I know the answer to this. Does the business owner or developer have any responsibility to help the displaced businesses find a new home, or is there any sort of monetary impact there? Is there anything the developer or the landowner has to do about the businesses?
I don't recall offhand. I'm not sure if there's another staff member that can lean in on that, but I can, I can try to read through the statute quickly to see if there's something there, but it's been a while since I've read it in its entirety.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So now applicant. Sorry to make you get up and down, but we're ready for you now.
So thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members for being here today, and also thank you to staff for that. A wonderful and concise presentation. My name is Pamela Salas Needing, and I am the Vice President, City Ventures. I'm also Planning Commissioner in my hometown, so I know the love of your town and the dedication it takes to be here. We also have our CEO, Phil Kerr, with us. For those of you who don't know very much about City Ventures, we are a sustainable, oh, sorry, Bay Area builder that primarily focuses on infill developments. And our company actually came to life as a core belief in creating partnerships with municipalities. Speaking of partnerships, and before I dive into the project, we are very honored at City Ventures in being able to work in partnership with the town of Los Gatos on this housing element site. So the goal of today is to breathe life into the vision that the town had for this site long ago. The one and a half acre site is located at the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Garden Lane. It consists of 55 for-sale, all-electric townhome units that vary from studios all the way to three bedrooms, and square footage is ranging approximately from 300 to 1,500 square feet. We're providing eight BMRs, four at low, four at moderate, the four work-live units that you see here, two project access to the site along this drive aisle, and an additional guest parking lot with its own driveway. Earlier, late last year, we completed a community outreach where yours truly personally walked the entire neighborhood that you see here with a batch of gluten-free cookies and non-gluten-free baked goods. And really, what the point of it was is that I wanted to get feedback and introduce myself because I'm a person. I wanted to see who was moving, I wanted the residents to see who was moving into the neighborhood. So really, the crux of this presentation, because I only have three minutes left, is you spoke and we listened. The current vehicular pedestrian access to the site is off Los Gatos Boulevard, leaving Garden Lane with a pseudo-walled-off condition. An item of importance was access to the site, both vehicular and pedestrian. One goal was to allow flow in and out of the site. You can see here that we shifted the traffic over, the traffic access to Garden Lane. The pedestrian now flows through the site instead of having a wall. And another important access is easily accessible means and methods to get to the VTA bus stops, plus all of that green that you see here is our bicycle parking. The design of the central drive aisle was important. We added balconies that you see here in yellow to activate the aisles and added pavers to emulate a Wunorf-type street that one would find in Europe. We added the bands of the different pavers that you see here to differentiate between vehicles and pedestrians. Additionally, we added a bulbout at Garden Lane to provide that safe accessibility to Oak Hill Park that is just Kitty Cordner. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the proprietary stormwater treatment system that really allowed this green space to exist. So instead of having a giant flow-through planner, what you have here is underground chambers that provide the sustainability of stormwater while allowing that amenity that I was talking about that's the heart of the project. I did want to highlight one thing as I was reading the comments that came in last night, and that's tree screening along Garden Lane. We were very intentional about providing trees along Garden Lane, as well as orienting the buildings as such to provide a sense of privacy to the existing residents. And here's some quick imagery of our green space. And then the last element was the buffer along the gas station. That's really to delineate the start of the residential component. Last but not least, for the architecture, we know that architecture in downtown Los Gatos has a special place and influence, so for our architecture, we brought a little piece of downtown to Los Gatos Boulevard, all while keeping it unique. And as Sean mentioned in our last Planning Commission hearing, we received some last-minute feedback on the architectural, on the architecture particularly along Los Gatos Boulevard. And so these are the architectural enhancements that we turned around within 24 hours, which I was pretty proud. And to really end my presentation, here are the images of the town completed, really with the storyline of we're trying to bring the town's vision to fruition. Here, you see Garden Lane. Another Garden Lane, there's those trees. And then also along Los Gatos Boulevard frontage. And with that, I am done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Reni?
Come back. They won't be too complicated questions. Don't need to.
Oh, he was right here the whole time.
Two questions. So you, for the below-market units, you mentioned four of them are moderate, and I recently read an article about trouble in San Jose filling moderate below-market units. They're sitting empty. Why are you confident that you'll be able to fill them?
BMRs are needed everywhere. I apologize that I did not hear about that. I actually just met with Councilmember Ortiz last Friday, where we're bringing quite a bit of BMRs of all levels, and at least what I was told from him was all levels of affordability are needed.
Well, if you haven't read the article, then it probably doesn't help much, but it kind of said that a moderate is not that far off from a naturally occurring market-rate cheaper unit, and I don't, I can't remember exactly. There were some reasons why applicants didn't need to go through the whole BMR process. They'd just buy something else. And so that a number of moderates were sitting open. In Los Gatos, it's likely that natural occurring is going to be higher than in San Jose, so maybe it becomes more reasonable to fill these. Second question. Thank you for all the changes to the architecture based on the recommendations. One thing I didn't see a change on, and I could have missed it, was the retaining wall. We had a rule that we don't want 300-foot-long retaining walls without any breaks, you know, so that they don't look like just a big, long wall.
Right.
Did you make any changes to that?
We did. So to make it beautiful, we have wrought iron fencing with a vining that we're going to put because we couldn't have a ton of space for the break, and so we're hoping that that, what I love is a structural enhancement helps bring in that variety and that beauty to really a civil engineering element.
Okay. Thank you. I missed that in the redos. Thanks.
Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. Kind of teeing off Councilmember Reni's comment, I just wanted to verify, these are for sale, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because I read the same article, and it referred to rentals that-
Oh, yeah, that is different.
-moderate apartments, because there was other apartments that were-
Got it.
-not as nice or older that could run for the same price. So as clarification, this is for sale?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. That's the only question I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I had a question. Could you talk a little bit about the open space or green space, and who would use it? Is it open to the neighborhood as well?
Yes.
I think that is something that would be interesting to understand.
Can we go to Slide 5, please? If that's not possible, that's totally okay. I'm glad you asked that question.
We should be able to, we should be able to get that, I think. It would be helpful for me to see the diagram.
Perfect. Oh, the next one, please. So that is open to anybody, and the reason, right now, if you go to Garden Lane, there's a lot of retaining wall, and it's kind of that pseudo-closed-off condition that I brought up. And so this was very intentional for us to open up the heart of the project, as I like to call it, to Los Gatos Boulevard to create, to provide that airway, breezeway connectivity. And I think it's going to be a beautiful kind of pit stop because really what folks want to go to is Oak Hill Park, which is a gem, right? Which is why we also provided, Mayor, the extended bulbout. And then you can even see in the way, it's a half-circle. It's inviting, and there was a very intentionality even about the shape in which the green space and the seating was also put in there.
Okay. Thank you. It sounds like that was part of your interaction with the neighborhood in thinking about opening that to the neighborhood.
Yes.
Question, this may be more for the town attorney, but that's the, your intention to develop it this way. Is there anything that would prevent an HOA from putting a fence up and keeping the neighborhood out?
If I'm not, was that a question for me or to Sean?
Well, for you first, if you're aware of anything, and then I, we can go to Sean.
So as I understand that we need to be, whenever we do the construction documents, we have to be in substantial conformance with these entitlement plans, and these entitlement plans never showed a privacy fence being put there. Sean, do you have a better?
Yeah, thank you.
I think that's an accurate statement, and, yeah, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Town attorney, so an HOA couldn't just put a fence in there and block it?
And that's correct, so long as the conditions of approval clearly state that the park is to be maintained as a public space.
And is that in the conditions of approval?
I think Sean and I will check that.
Okay.
It's not currently in the conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you. I would be interested in something like that. Other questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So, yeah, I also wanted to address the public, or the green space. Can you talk a little bit about the design there? I was, you know, we've seen a few of these developments come through, and I think oftentimes the green space ends up being a bioswale, which bioswales are important, but I think green space is, you know, equally if not more important. And so I was worried that this was a bioswale, and you shared that it's not. So can you share a little bit about the design?
Yeah. This is perfect. So this is where I kind of geek out as a civil engineer. So instead of having a giant buyer-attention planner that is beautiful to look at, but you can't actually put puppies and babies and sit on it, this is that proprietary system that utilizes stormwater chambers called Silva cells. And what it does, it provides the retention, the detention, the water quality, and also you have evapotranspiration through these very selected trees. So this is a low-impact design that is really what's wanted now for stormwater treatment. So now the trees actually have an intentionality. They're not only being there to provide an aesthetic, but they're also being provided sustainability. And this is what's aligned that entire green space area to be open for seating and activity and just that urban community that we're hoping is built there.
Thank you. And then one other question on the, sort of, I was glad to see the bulbout on Garden Lane. Can you talk a little bit more about other infrastructure improvements that you're making, either on Garden Lane or on Los Gatos Boulevard?
Yes. Actually, both Garden Lane and Los Gatos Boulevard are both being improved in order to make Garden Lane wider, because our side of the street doesn't actually have a sidewalk. We're doing an additional dedication to make, to make that sidewalk even larger.
Thank you.
Councilmember Badami?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to go back to the open space and the HOA. So being that it's open space and open to the public, the HOA- the HOA is going to be a situation where the members, the unit owners, pay fees into the HOA that takes care of the landscaping, the maintenance, and the liability insurance for which is open to the public?
It's really, it's such a simple green space. And what we did for maintenance reasons is a lot of our developments have an intentionality with what improvements we put on there. So the turf, all the planting is supposed to be for easy, easy maintenance. We wouldn't have something that is cumbersome and difficult or expensive to maintain. And I know people can talk, that's a practice of City Ventures. So it's a very simple turf. Even, even the fire pit, Councilmember Badame, what we, what I've been choosing is something that's easily replaceable, for example, or chairs, right? That's like easily replaceable. So it's meant, they're meant to be used and they're going to have wear and tear.
Okay, I think it's great to be used. My concern is, is it going to be a dog park? And then will we?
Oh, it's not considered, it's not classified as a dog park.
The people will be welcome to bring their dogs. And then you have dog bite issues and it goes back on the HOA.
Oh.
I'm just getting it to the weeds.
Yeah.
But that's my field.
No, I hear you. For insurance, everyone should have their own insurance. You can have a dog bite anywhere. But I hear what you're saying. That a dog can bite on the sidewalk, on our site, across the street of the park. I agree with you. Thank you. Oh, yes.
So what's the orientation of the homes toward that space? Is it, is it something that they can see?
Yeah, the front doors, all, so that people walk out into the open space. So we tried instead of, and that was what I was talking about, the privacy. So instead of orienting, we could have oriented the homes to face Garden Lane and had the opens, the green space, as I call it, behind. But instead, this orientation gives the privacy that I noted before with the tree screening to the neighbors and then brings the activity in towards the site versus out towards Garden Lane.
So it also creates a sense of place with
Exactly.
the people who are living there, who are looking at what's going on in that space, right? So it's a little different than some open spaces that might be off to the side.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. Two things. One, you know, I believe I looked through the plantings. It looks like these are all natural plantings. And I just want to verify there's not going to be plastic grass anywhere. Okay, thank you.
Sean just gave me a look.
And then the other question is, you know, as we're talking about this open space, you know, I was looking at it, you know, it's essentially people's front yards, a nice place to sit, maybe chat with your neighbors. In terms of, it looks like it'll be open to the neighbors. But when I'm looking at a bigger map, it's a tiny fraction of the size of the Oak Hill Play Lot.
Yeah.
Is it not? So I'm just trying to understand that in general, if people are walking by, they'll be heading to the park.
They'll most, with me and my kids, I'd go to the park. But in a pinch, if you need to like stretch your legs, get some fresh air, that's a great way to do it in an urban setting.
Okay. And thank you, I appreciate the sidewalk and the other improvements for not only the residents, but the people nearby.
Town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, panel, thank you for the presentation. Are you indicating that the open space would be open to the external community?
It's, it's, it's not an open space, oh, but yeah, of course.
So I just wanted to chime in real quick and introduce myself. I have a speaker card. And I'm Phil Kerr, I'm the CEO of City Ventures. And I just wanted to address that because I think there's a little confusion on, the goal originally was to make it open, so the area is open. I think there's some confusion on open space. This isn't an area that's ideal for a public open space, as you said. It's not a public park. The idea was, in some of the feedback from the planning commission, to make sure that we opened it to the, to the public space and didn't have a closed-off feeling space there. I mean, this is an area that's, as you can see, all the houses and their front porches are right there. So you don't really want it, I mean, in terms of the community interface, to have people, you know, coming right up to your front door, right there. So the intent here is open to the public, but not open to the public, if you mean. So I think there was some confusion in those words that were coming out. So the idea is that the, there's not something separating it, but it's not intended for people to come in there and, you know, have barbecues in front of someone's house.
Town manager?
Clarify it?
Okay, that's what was my understanding from the beginning. So just to clarify, the intention is to keep it private space. So members of the community outside of this community technically aren't allowed to be in that space.
Correct. And it's not, I mean, this is a green space. And again, it's an aesthetic benefit, right? But again, it's, we're trying to keep that interface. The HOA will maintain it, maintain all the landscaping. Per the earlier question, you know, there can be a condition tied in will build it into the HOA documents that it can never be fenced off.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, yeah. I had a question about this. So, so I understand it correctly. My, my mom lives down the street in the Charter Oaks development. I don't know if staff is familiar or that, you know, not to use everyone's least favorite development, but the North Forty. Those are how I'm thinking about this. They're not, you can walk through there, nobody's going to kick you out. But they, the HOA owns and maintains the space. Is that, okay?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any more questions. So thank you for that. You will have three minutes after the public speaks. And so I have a number of cards. Shirley Reiki and then Karen Yamamoto.
Thank you, and my name is Shirley. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of many of the residents of Oakwood Way, none of whom were spoken to by the developers. So the input, I'm not sure where that came from, didn't come from my area. Imagine for a moment, living in a quiet one-story home with a six-story building looming over you. Why six? Well, that's what this proposed construction would make our below-grade homes that are at the end of Oakwood Way. So please, consider reducing the height of this proposed development because I don't want to have to look up, in effect, six stories. I'm not against housing in this space at all. Obviously, people have to live somewhere. But I urge you, consider honestly if this is the height of a building that you would like for a new development right next to your home. I've lived in this quiet neighborhood for 25 years. In this pleasant cul-de-sac, we all know each other, have each other's emails and phone numbers, and talk with each other across the hedges. The North Forty development began to change all that, of course. For years, we put up with the noise and mess of construction. And we can now no longer turn left out of our street and to Highland Oaks, onto Lark Avenue to access Highway 17, not something that we were told about beforehand. That leads me to my second point, access. Owing to the North Forty development and the consequent closure of the left turn out of Highland Oaks, local residents now often need to access Highway 17 via Garden Lane, the road at the back of the proposed development. This street is already a parking lot on both sides of the road, making emerging from that street, from Oak Park Drive before turning left onto Los Gatos Boulevard extremely hazardous. And if there's not going to be parking for everyone in this development, that will be horrendous. By providing access for this proposed new development onto Los Gatos Boulevard only, you would be making access safer for all. And there are already multiple access points from the Boulevard onto this property. Our third point, and this is really our biggest fear, owing to the height of the proposed new build, relates to the overlooking of our homes and yards. This, the proposed cutting down of large protected trees, two or three of which I see are dead. But they're protected for a reason. They're tall and old because it takes many years to grow to that height. Please require keeping as many as possible of those trees so that we will not have to look up into their rooms and they won't be peering down into our backyard either. To you, this might simply be an up or down vote. But by reducing the build height, thinking carefully about the planned access, and keeping as many big trees as possible on the street, I think you would enjoy living in this neighborhood too, as we do now, and would like to continue to do so. Thank you, I hope, for listening.
Thank you. I do have a question, if you don't mind. So with the application, there is some environmental work. It's called a modified initial study. And it talks about the number of trips that would be generated by the new development. And it says with 55 townhomes, including four live-work units, is anticipated to generate, to generate a total of approximately 396 daily trips, including 26 a.m. peak hour trips and 31 p.m. peak hour trips. This was part of the study that was done. Are those, those numbers make sense to you? And do you think that number would exacerbate the access issue that you brought up in a significant way?
Well, I'm not a planner, so I really can't comment on that. But what I can tell you is that there's parking all the time on both sides of that street. And trying to come out onto that street is very hazardous right now. And I think the addition of any additional vehicles would obviously make the situation significantly worse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to, are you talking about Garden Lane?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I escape now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Karen Yamamoto and then Desmond Camus.
Hi, I'm Karen Yamamoto. Hi, everybody. They said that they did changes to the building, but I didn't hear any changes to the height. So I'm assuming it's still 45 feet tall for a three-story building? Is that correct? And if so, why if it's a three-story building? Three-story buildings are typically 35 feet, 36 feet. If I'm wrong, please correct me. So if we have a three-story building, why does it have to be so tall? And why does this have to be an SB 330? With special accommodations. We're not against the building of homes there. We're against the height. We're really concerned about that because if they catch on fire, it's going to blow right into our neighbors' yards. Now, I'm just barely 1,000 feet away from it. But they're right on top of them. I mean, right across the street, and they're lower. So my concern with that is that the height hopefully can come down. Instead of one easement going out onto, or two easements going out onto Garden Lane, which would add more congestion to that one road, I like, still like the idea of putting, just like her, what she said, putting one exit onto Los Gatos Boulevard, just in case there's an emergency, people need to be evacuated out of there for some reason, maybe a fire. They're not all trying to get out onto Garden Lane. As far as the green space, we got a park across the street. So a green space is really irrelevant for this project. And I know it's required, but it's not an issue for us because we do have a beautiful park. Thank you.
Thank you. Desmond Camus and then Alex Camus.
Good evening. My name is Desmond Camus, and I live two blocks from the planned development. And I'm here to share my wholehearted support and excitement. This is a great spot for these homes. They'd be within easy walking distance of grocery stores. There's like a Trader Joe's right across the street. Restaurants, two parks, and they aren't far from the Creek Trail. This site is also adjacent to stops for public transit and also tech commuter shuttles. These homes would be great for anyone from empty nesters looking to downsize, young families needing room to grow and a place to plant roots, and families like mine who want more choices in deciding where they live. I hope that the council sees value in approving this project and other housing developments, not just for helping Los Gatos achieve its housing goals, but because of the real people will get the opportunity to live and thrive in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Camus and then Kathy Jest.
Good evening. My name is Alex Camus, and I also live very close to the proposed development. This is a well-thought-out and much-needed project. Not only will the development provide desperately needed housing, but these homes will also give families a way to get access to the great schools in Los Gatos, ensuring that low enrollment doesn't force our schools to close. I'm a teacher and I've seen the proposed, sorry. I've seen the projected enrollments for districts in our county, and they're not optimistic. According to the California Department of Education, 10 years ago, Los Gatos Union School District had 3,320 students. Last year, it had 2,673. That's a decline of 20% in less than a decade. If that trend continues, then Los Gatos might be forced to follow the path of districts like Cupertino, which have had to close multiple school districts in the last few years due to a 30% decline in enrollment. Our students and their families are more than numbers, though. They're an integral part of who we are. I look at my students and I worry that the place they're growing up in will be inaccessible to them in the future. If we don't build new housing, then most of my students, then most of my students will be forced to live far away from their friends and families. I'm excited to meet the people who will become my neighbors. I want to see them enrich our community and fill it with even more character. I'm asking that the council vote to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Jest, and that's the last card that I have. We'll go to Zoom after this unless someone else would like to speak.
Hi, my name is Kathy Jest, and I live in Los Gatos and have most of my life. I've been attending meetings over the past few months to kind of get an appreciation for what's happening in the town in general. And I appreciate the difficult decisions that the council must make with respect to growth in the town. And I am for growth, by the way. There's not small building requests that we've been working on in the past. This is actually urban planning for the future. And I hope the council keeps in mind the goals that have been outlined, and that specifically to preserve, promote, and protect the existing small-town character and quality of life, and to provide for well-planned, careful growth that reflects the town's existing character and infrastructure. And I understand that each project is to examine its own cumulative impacts. However, it has been mentioned at many of the meetings, I'd still like to see a cumulative impact assessment done for all of the proposed projects. The assessment should be shared with all town residents. And the assessment should review traffic, which is already a huge problem here, especially Los Gatos Boulevard, Lark Avenue. And I think that the surrounding neighborhoods would like to see a total assessment done. And not just through data analysis, but actually someone that's actually sitting out there and watching the traffic go by, as you have done, Mayor, to actually see what's going on. I think that needs to be done. I'd also like to see an emergency evacuation review or drill conducted in the event of an earthquake or a fire, as has been mentioned in numerous meetings and again today. That is a concern for the town. And the more and more properties that go on, that's more cars, it's more people. And I just think we owe it to all of the residents that we do that study. Right now, Lark Avenue, Los Gatos Boulevard are huge ways to get out of this town. Putting more things all around it is going to be a concern, especially if the proposed North Forty Phase Two, you know, happens. I agree, the buildings are a little too tall. And in addition, I was kind of wondering if we're still looking for a lot more low-income housing of the 55, why we're only eight being assigned to the low to moderate. So I hope that this type of analysis could be conducted and would be conducted. And thank you for letting me express my concerns.
Thank, apologize for mispronouncing your name. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak?
There are three hands on Zoom. Rich?
Okay, go ahead, Rich.
Yes, I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rich Stevens. I was born in Los Gatos 60 years ago, and I've lived on Benedict Lane for almost the last 30. First, out of principle, I wish this was not using SB 330. I think it's a horrible law. And I think it's a crux to developers in taking advantage of things that technically I don't think they should be able to. That said, thank you to everyone involved, including City Ventures, the project teams, and the town for both the original and ultimate design of this project. Knowing that Los Gatos has been mandated to add homes by the state, I believe this development is one of the better ones that have been proposed. I believe this was thoughtfully and respectfully done to fit the town and the neighborhood as much as possible. And I believe they've worked with the town as much as possible, knowing what And I believe they've worked with the town as much as possible, knowing what the end goal should be. So thank you for the openness and cooperation. I would like to express some concerns that I hope will be discussed tonight. I would definitely prefer that the entrance was on Los Gatos Boulevard. Having it on Garden Lane will add more traffic to the Oaks neighborhood, as well as Benedict Lane and the surrounding Shurco subdivision streets. That said, I understand that there are limitations because of the shape of lot. So I live with this with one ask. I'd like to see the Los Gatos Green Streets be a single-directional loop with a right turn only for the exit onto Garden Lane. I believe this will help minimize the traffic through the neighborhoods. Second concern, I only see eight visitor parking spaces. I don't think that's anywhere close to what's going to be needed for fifty-five units. Garden Lane is already very crowded from Lark Avenue Car Wash and a number of other businesses that parked their work trucks there. To minimize the traffic, crowding, and noise in the neighborhood, please consider incentivizing guests that don't fit in the parking lot to park on Los Gatos Boulevard. An idea might be to require a permit for overnight parking on Garden Lane to minimize the businesses from leaving their trucks there overnight. A third is noise and disruption and road damage during construction. Please only allow construction trucks to enter and exit on Los Gatos Boulevard for as long as possible, and then, when the building starts, into the neighborhood via the north end of Garden Lane by Rat and Robbie. And quickly, the fourth is visibility into the Oaks Neighborhoods homes on the opposite side of Garden Lane. I like the trees that are already planned. I would ask that you check with the neighbors and see if there is still a concern. I believe there would be. It would be nice if the builder provided a solid wall above them and/or funded trees on the west side of Garden Lane to help with their privacy. As an earlier speaker mentioned, I would not want these people, which would seem to be six stories or near that amount, to be looking into my yard. So I think putting some sort of barrier in addition to the trees already planned would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker on Zoom?
Bernard?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Brian Barnard. I also grew up in Los Gatos. Forty-five years ago, I was born here, but have not always lived here. And I've been on both sides of this type of thing. And while I don't live right near this development, I have recently moved back to Los Gatos after living in San Francisco. And I know firsthand the impacts of underdevelopment and just the, you know, overregulation and the propensity for neighborhoods and neighbors to, you know, push back against any sort of new development. And, you know, I of course feel for everybody living right near this development, but we do need the housing. We need both the affordable housing, the moderate housing, any housing. It took years to find a place to live here. And, you know, I hope going forward that these types of issues can be eased. I think a lot of the responsibility for things like planning, traffic, et cetera, should fall within the town purview, the county, the state, and not necessarily always the developers. I think it's important that we support and promote developers such as this that are working with the town, with the county. They're following within the regulations. They're trying to have concerted conversations and, you know, hopefully dialogue with the residents as well that exist. I think promoting projects like this that are well-thought-out, well-planned, and well-compromised are, you know, exactly what we need going forward. And I hope that the town does consider all that. And I hope we see this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jim?
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, this is Jim Lackadoo. I'm a twenty-eight-year resident of Los Gatos. I've been to a series of these developments, for some, against some. It seems like this one's very, taking a lot of things into consideration, going by the book on most of it. So it sounds like they're very willing to work through the issues at hand. There are a couple of issues remaining, it sounds like. But, so I just wanted to throw my support out there. I like how this process has been with this one and continued success for it. We do need this here. And of course, we do need to watch the congestion and all those issues. But very nice, well done, looks good, and appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you. That's all we have on Zoom?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, I have no more cards. So I will close the public comment and then go back to the applicant for three minutes to address whatever you'd like. And then council members can ask questions as well.
So I'll be quick. What I did want to talk about is the height of the buildings. So there is a topographic difference between elevation of Garden and Los Gatos. So on Garden Lane, the height of the building is roughly thirty-five feet, right Dan? And the only reason why it's higher on Los Gatos Boulevard is because we didn't want those buildings to be sunken in because we have the live-work units. So the idea was that we stepped the building only so that you can have the activation of that sunken-in feeling along Los Gatos Boulevard. So I think that that hopefully will appease that three-story height, that thirty-five that public comment talked about, along with the trees that we're planting. I think will help provide that screening that folks were talking about.
I just wanted to thank everybody and thank the whole team. You have a terrific staff. Sean and our team have worked really well together. These projects are hard. I live in Sausalito. Pam is on a planning commission. We know how hard it is to develop new housing, but also how important it is. It's really important on this project to differentiate it. There's a lot of projects in Los Gatos right now. This project is one that is consistent with the housing element that Los Gatos put together. It's actually at the lowest density of what's allowed in the housing element. And so I think that's a really important differentiation for this project. And we've worked really closely. We talk about partnering. That's an easy word to throw out there. But we work, we really pride ourselves in working with communities to figure out how to solve the housing problem within Phil Housing, providing needed median-price housing for people within these communities, and doing it in a way that takes into consideration that back and forth to design a project that works for a site. This could have been a lot more dense on this site. We found a balance and worked with the staff to try and do that. So we come to you tonight with unanimous support of the planning commission, with a really great process that's taken a lot of community input, but really worked closely with your staff, has been terrific, to pull together something that we hope you will approve tonight. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Are there questions of the applicant? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I just wanted to quickly ask about what I raised with the existing businesses. So I think actually that's the biggest, as someone that lives very close by, that's actually the biggest concern that I've heard is that, you know, people use Genuine Automotive, people use the dry cleaner. And I know some of those folks have been able, like the nail place has moved into downtown, from my understanding, and the boxing gym has moved down the street to a location that's probably better for them. Do you have any plans to help the remaining businesses find new homes and sort of land on their feet? Because I do think they're important parts of the community.
And this is where I was really hoping that Jim Foley could call in. The owner, Jonathan Peck, and his broker, Jim, took a lot of care to be extremely communicative with, so that there be no surprise. And so because Jim is a broker, he's been helping them try to find out where they can land. And again, with that certainty of time, that's what you need as a business owner, is the certainty, the communication, the this is what's happening. No one is hiding anything. I hope that helps. And then I heard through Jim that some folks are might be retiring. I'm not going to say who. The business, because it's been open for a long time, but hopefully that answers the question.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Foley is actually online, if you'd like to turn it over to him.
Oh, okay.
Wonderful.
Mr. Foley, would you like to add anything to that last comment that was about the businesses?
Yeah, good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we've worked closely with City Ventures now for a couple of years. And this is something that we've, you know, been very sensitive to as far as the tenants there. And we're working with them to try to relocate them. It's always a challenge, right? It's always based on timing, based on needs, based on size. But we're in contact with all of them. And we really hope to be successful with some of the smaller tenants to be able to put them in places nearby Los Gatos. I know Genuine Automotive is a difficult one because there's just not a lot of places zoned appropriately nearby. But we are working with them as well to try to find them something that's a really good fit that will help them serve their clients, you know, within an appropriate radius. And so, you know, any other questions you guys have for me, I can help you out with that. But it's been a long-time planned effort to try to deliver a good project on this site and a good collaboration with City Ventures. So we'll fully support it and hope to make it as easy as possible for the tenants that are there. And I think we've made, you know, a decent amount of progress trying to relocate them.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, but just a quick follow-up on that, Mr. Foley. Thank you for that. That's helpful. So it seemed like that largely y'all have been pretty successful. I'm actually not asking about Genuine Automotive, I believe. There's one other business in there that's a dry cleaner that is particularly concerned about not having a place to land. So are you going to continue, you know, if this development is approved this evening, are you going to continue working with those existing tenants to try to find somewhere for them to go?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, I'm open to working with everybody, as you know. Do a lot of business and leasing in town. A lot of it also has to come from the tenant's side to be willing to figure out, you know, where's a decent fit, what their parameters are for relocating. You know, we can do the best that we can. It's always, it's always a challenge. It's like a giant puzzle, right? We're trying to fit the different pieces of the puzzle in different slots. So our doors are open to helping anybody that needs it. We've been engaged with most of them at certain levels. But, you know, as far as, you know, commitments and things like that, or, you know, having representation, contracts in place, there isn't a lot of that. But we're open to, you know, me personally certainly open to helping do that. And we've extended a lot of information and communication to try to get that done.
And I'll just end with, I would just encourage, you know, both on the developer's side and with Mr. Foley, to continue working with the existing tenants to try to find them a place to land because I think that's, yeah, super important.
Thank you. I think that's going to be the case up and down Los Gatos Boulevard. And I really hope that what results is occupying a lot of spaces that may have had trouble getting occupied before. So if we can kind of retool that whole scenario out there on Los Gatos Boulevard and move people into other places and places where they can be successful as the developments occur, then we have a win-win for everybody.
Okay. Other questions? I actually have a number that were raised by the public. But before I go, anyone else? So I had one, two, three, four questions about traffic and traffic flow. And so I'm wondering if you could help with those. The first one is there's traffic work that's been done in the modified initial study, correct?
Yeah, let me introduce myself. Gary Black with the Hexagon Transportation Consultants. And we did a traffic study for the project in collaboration with your public work staff.
Okay, so first question is, did you or your firm observe the existing conditions?
Yes.
And what hours of the day was that?
The traffic studies traditionally focus on weekdays during the morning commute and the afternoon commute. And those are defined as seven to nine AM in the morning and four to six PM in the evening.
So those are the hours that you or someone from your firm was on-site?
Yes.
Okay. The second was the idea about emergency access to Los Gatos Boulevard. Was that considered, was it discussed with county fire?
We did not have those discussions. Maybe your staff could answer that question.
Okay. There was a suggestion to have a single direction of flow through the development with exit to Garden Lane. Is that something that you considered or would consider?
I can't speak for the developer. We took the site plan as a given that has access on Garden Lane and not access on Los Gatos Boulevard. We didn't study a scenario that, you know, had different access than that. We did find that the access as proposed would function adequately. I know the question came to me somewhere along the line of, well, what about if we had access just to Los Gatos Boulevard instead? Kind of flip it around. So there's trade-offs there, Los Gatos Boulevard. That would involve a lot of U-turns because there's a median on Los Gatos Boulevard. So U-turns are, you know, not a great thing. They can be avoided by having the access on Garden Lane as long as there's enough, if you will, capacity to accommodate traffic on Garden Lane. And our conclusions were it's adequate.
Thank you. These are actually questions for the developer, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now that I realize it. And I think you addressed the first two questions. But the other two that I had were raised about emergency access with perhaps a lock gate to Los Gatos Boulevard. Is that something that you considered for evacuation purposes? Was that something that was discussed with county fire?
So county fire did, sorry, Santa Clara County Fire Department did approve and review a proposed use with their fire. And they didn't, I guess I don't, that's the best answer I can give you, is that they looked at it, they blessed the project and allowed it to move forward. And they're really the expert with regards to fire access. So they made sure they could access the building appropriately. They loved the two driveways also for in and out.
If I could ask, what's the width of the pedestrian access to the Boulevard between buildings?
The drive aisle? Very hard to read. Alley A is twenty-six feet, top of curb to top of curb. And that was driven by fire department. So the fire department had to make sure they could get in and out of the site to fight the fire and do their job adequately.
And that's off of the Boulevard, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Huenas. I thought you were talking about our alley off of Garden Lane.
No, I'm talking about if there were a secondary evacuation to the Boulevard, how wide is the space between buildings? I think where your pedestrian path is right now.
I see. That is roughly about twenty feet because the drive-al behind building E is eighteen feet.
And would that be sufficient if that were necessary as a secondary evacuation route?
For pedestrians?
No, for cars.
I don't feel adequate to make that determination because I'm not, I'm sorry.
No, is the short answer. The, there's some retaining walls in there. So there's pedestrian access through there, but you could not get a car through there. But we did have the project reviewed thoroughly in terms of the evacuation with the multiple points onto Garden. And you do have pedestrian access onto the Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question that was raised was the idea of a single direction with exit to Garden Lane? Single direction of traffic flow? Is that something that you have considered? Is that something that came up with discussions as you did neighborhood outreach?
Not in what I heard.
If you just lower the mic a little bit, yeah.
Sorry.
So you say, what's your answer?
No, I did not get that feedback, so I did not study that.
Okay. Is that something that you think is worth studying now that it's come up in public comment?
Right, and the question is, is...
A single-direction traffic flow with exit to Garden Lane? I believe that's what Mr. Stevens described.
So to clarify your question, you're asking, are you asking if there's a single, like a right turn only? Is that what you're suggesting? Or when you say, what do you mean by single flow?
I think he was referring to one-way.
To one-way access?
Through the development.
Through the development.
Right.
And I'm not sure what that really gets you. It would just make it, I mean, this, having two-way access would just provide more dispersion of traffic. And so I think, I don't, I don't think that would be a wise thing to do because it would just put all the traffic at one point. So I don't think we'd want to do that.
Okay, thanks. We can follow up with the traffic engineer after that, just while we have you up here. And then the last one that came up from Mr. Stevens was to have during construction, to do entry of trucks from Los Gatos Boulevard as long as possible, and then have them enter from the north end of Garden Lane near Rotten Robbie. Is that something that is in the plan, or have you considered it?
Yeah, we'll definitely, we'll definitely consider that. I mean, we'll put together a whole construction plan, and it's really in our best interest to minimize interaction with the neighborhood and minimize any conflicts there under, during construction. So we will certainly look at that through the, through the construction plan. I think that's actually a really helpful comment, so appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I had one other that was raised by Ms. Riki, and I'm wondering, I know that you addressed that during your time, but I'm wondering if we could put the diagram up and understand where the 35 versus the 45-foot height is and where it might appear to be a six-story building. Is that on one of the slides, or is that in the packet?
Yeah, we, while we're pulling up the diagram, we can clarify, there is no six-story buildings here, just to be clear. These are three-story buildings. The each plate of the building is 10 feet. So the three stories add up to 30 feet. The difference that's been discussed is then on Los Gatos Boulevard, the plates are a little higher than that because you also have the roof as well on that. So the 35 feet on one side of the project on Garden is, is the plates of the three stories plus the five feet of additional roof, which hides any mechanical or anything on the roof. Over on Los Gatos Boulevard, you have slightly higher plates to deal with the grade change so that you have a consistent building that doesn't break up the building and make it, you know, all disjointed.
Okay. And yeah, what I was interested in exploring is specifically the area where the neighbor stated that they were below grade, and so it had the appearance of six stories. So do you have, do you have a diagram, or can you refer to one in the packet that we can look at?
Maybe we can pull up a...
Yeah, thank you. We, we can't take any more public comment. Thanks.
So, I mean, that, that would imply that there's some homes that are three stories underground, but I'm, I don't know enough of the detail to know that there's three, three, four subgrade in, in the area. I don't believe there is that would make it six-story difference.
Yeah. So if, if we could look at a contour diagram that shows the elevation and shows the 35-foot versus the 45-foot, that would, if you can refer to that, it should be in our packet.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
The, I can refer and help the clerk pull up from the packet. There's, I can offer a site plan that shows spot elevations. I can offer a building section and building elevations. Just let me know what you'd like to see, and I can let her know the page numbers in the packet.
Yeah, it'd be helpful while the applicant is still up here. So if it's possible to pull those up.
I'm ready now. I have, I have those ready now.
Thank you.
And through the mayor, I could suggest, starting with a site plan, which would be on page 280 of the packet. And that site plan provides spot elevations, and then I can, we can move on to building elevations in a building section if you'd like.
Can we put that up there?
The clerk's working on that now.
Great, thank you. And what was that page number again?
Two eight zero.
Thank you.
May I address the council while he's looking for, my name's Dan Hale with Hale Jones Architects?
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe just try to shed a little more light on the discussion of height. There is a, a rendering off Garden Boulevard which, which shows a typical three-story townhouse where the plate heights, the eve height is about 32 feet. And as was mentioned, we have a sloping roof that goes up and hides mechanical equipment, so it gets to 35-feet-ish. We hear about the 45-feet height. There is, because of the slope of the site, there's an area where the building fronts Los Gatos Boulevard, and it's three stories on Los Gatos Boulevard. The plate height is 32 feet. It slopes up on Los Gatos Boulevard. On the interior of the project, because of the slope change, we've dropped the garage. And so there's an area out of the five buildings, there's one building with about half of that building because of the slope change, has a plate height somewhere between 32 and 34 and a half feet, and it slopes up higher. So that's, and it's on the interior of the project. It's typically not seen from Los Gatos Boulevard, and probably won't be seen by people driving up and down or walking on Garden Boulevard. So hopefully we can find some diagrams that'll help explain.
There's, there's one up there now. If we could indicate where is the 35-foot and the 45-foot?
Pull it?
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you. On Los Gatos Boulevard, front doors and the face of the building is roughly the eve that starts to slope away, 32 feet above grade. There's a little bit of a change, so it slopes between maybe 31, 32, 32 and a half. But this street is about three and a half to four feet lower than Los Gatos Boulevard. So the interior garage is down lower than the front of the building, so it steps. But because we're keeping living levels on the same level to maximize livability of the plan, the height on the rear of the house is taller than the height on the front. And that's where we have the 34-foot plate height and up to 36, 37 feet. Fire department has reviewed all this. We've, we've worked with them. They liked, actually, there was discussion earlier about one-way access. Fire department liked two ways of access in case they were parked here, someone could get out in an opposite way. That was also came up in our discussions with the fire department. But this is the only area in the entire project where we have something that looks like it's more than three stories from the back of the project.
Okay. And then on Garden Lane, what are, what are the elevations?
These are all typical three-story.
How many feet?
These are two stories here. And the plate here is somewhere between, when I say the plate, where you see the sloping gutter, 32 feet plus or minus. I mean, there's slope change, so it's a little bit different, but it's about 32 feet.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And that's, is that where the neighboring residential is, is on Garden Lane?
I could be wrong, but I believe they're talking about these homes back here, which do sit, I believe, lower, lower than Garden Lane.
I see. So they, those homes are lower than Garden Lane, and do we know how much? Is that on the, are the contours on the map? No? Okay.
We did some spot elevations, Sean.
And through the mayor, I could offer, there's a, a great site section that demonstrates this on packet page 219. And based on the spot elevations, just a quick look, that cul-de-sac is about, it depends on where you're, or the backyard of those homes at the end of that cul-de-sac are about 10 feet lower than Garden Lane, depending on where the spot elevation's read.
Okay. So it's the 10 feet plus the 35 feet that may be the concern?
And if you look at the, the site section on the top, the residences along Garden Lane are to the right represented, and you can see that grade change as it drops down from Garden Lane to the right to the oak wood cul-de-sac, and the buildings, the site section runs to Los Gatos Boulevard.
Okay. And then I had one more question for the applicant about that. What is being planned for screening trees with regard to that particular part of the project?
Yeah, so that's why we have all of those trees that I showed before as a screening at Garden Lane.
And what's the height of those trees? What type of trees are they?
Ooh. Sean, I think they're 24-gallon trees, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you for your patience. The run, the rendering actually shows them at, at its full height, which is in my presentation.
Did you look at the sightlines from the windows on that part of the, your project going to that area that's 10 feet below grade? And, you know, how, I, I don't know how many feet away it is, but it doesn't look that far. It looks like across Garden Lane and then the backyard distance.
Yeah, their house has a retaining wall right at the back of Garden Lane. Then there's, from when I walked it, and then they have gardens, and then it's their house. If that answers your question.
Okay. I think we may have some more questions for staff about that, but thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. So we'll now close the public portion of the hearing, and I'd just like to ask council members for any disclosures about visits or sites. Council member, any?
I haven't visited the site lately, but I have walked on that, on Garden Lane before, and I have met with the developer, I think, in the last couple of weeks and also several months ago.
Vice Mayor?
While I live within 1,000 feet of this property, I spoke with the town attorney, who reached out to the Fair Political Practices Commission, and they clarified that because I am a renter, I do not have a conflict of interest as it relates to this proposal. And then I walk by this property regularly. I visited it yesterday, among other times, and I've met with the developer in person once and over the phone once.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. Yeah, I've walked, biked, and driven by this property quite a few times. Actually, walking along Garden Lane, I could not see the homes that would, I bought this because there's a huge tall fence, so it was hard to tell what's on the other side without looking at a map. And I met with the applicant twice. The first time, I think, feels like a year ago, maybe, and then in the last couple of weeks.
Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. I've corresponded with the applicant. However, I'm very familiar with this site. I've walked by it. I've driven by it several times.
Okay, thank you. And I did visit the site and walk it, and I met with the developer twice. I wanted to ask the town attorney about the conflict of interest and the, the recusal distance. So it surprised me that rental is an exception to the 1,000 feet, particularly since we frequently ask a business owner who rents their space to recuse when it is within 1,000 feet. Is this something new, or is it different?
It's been in the FPPC regulations for a while. And then to clarify, there's a bright-line recusal rule when someone lives within 500 feet of a project. However, the rental exception would apply to that as well. And then when a property, when a resident is between 500 and 1,000 feet of a project, there's a series of questions that need to be asked, such as would this affect the value of their property? Would it affect the quality of their life, et cetera? And so it's a more subjective line of inquiry when someone's between 500 and 1,000 feet.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Badami?
Is this a good time for us to ask questions of staff in addition? Okay, all right. So thank you for the earlier presentation, staff, on SB 330 and density bonus law. I think, I think it was helpful. But clearly, building height is a sore topic with residents in our town. So if staff can elaborate for us, once again, allowable heights relevant to SB 330 projects, and in particular, this particular application.
I can start with this particular application, and if needed, the town attorney could jump in. So this particular property is zone CH and has the housing element overlay zone applied to it. The maximum height allowed in the heaus is 45 feet. The maximum height proposed by the project is 45 feet. So there, a waiver or, a waiver or concession under something like state density bonus law isn't required for building height here as it, it complies with town code.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. A follow-on to that, can you tell me where on this plan, something is 45 feet? Because I thought as we were talking about the different along Garden Lane and along Los Gatos Boulevard, I didn't hear that number.
I believe it's building A, keeping in mind that we measure to the lower of the existing or proposed grade, to the highest point in a plumb vertical distance. So this is being measured to the top peak of the building, not to eve lines or plate lines or windows. And this building includes a flat roof in this, all these buildings include a flat roof in the center and somewhat of a parapet wall to screen mechanical equipment.
Okay. And building A, to clarify, is the one that's right on Los Gatos Boulevard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. There were some questions about the landscaping, and I think you were going to get back to it. I have page L4 here, and it talks about the tree plantings. And from what I can tell, at planting time, 10 feet high by six feet wide by several of the trees. Am I reading this correctly?
Thank you for that question. So the, the plants in, the trees in question along Garden Lane, I found on L3, to be 24-inch box Emerald Sunshine Elms. The, and it looks correct that the initial planting size would be 10 feet.
By six feet wide?
That looks correct. I'm struggling to find it because it's in Latin.
Want to borrow mine?
I can circle back and just, and just confirm those numbers, but there's two different species being referenced there.
Yeah, I think it gives us a, a good flavor for the landscaping that seemed to be a concern. Thank you.
I had a few questions about the environmental work. And so am I correct that this is the first SB 330 project that we have that's solely relying on tiering off of the 2040 general plan, EIR?
Thank you for that question. A similar process was used for the approval of the Los Gatos Lodge. They used 15183, which is slightly different than 15168, which is being used on this project. But both tier off of previously adopted EIRs.
Okay, thank you. So I had some questions about the EIR. I guess the first thing I wanted to start with is, how are the cumulative impacts studied? What were... What were the other subject properties that were part of the cumulative? Did it include any of the projects that are in the pipeline now?
And may I ask a clarifying question? Are you speaking about the EIR prepared for the general plan or the environmental document prepared for this project?
Yes, for this project.
For this project. So to clarify, an EIR was not prepared for this project, but the cumulative analysis, based on the direction at the time in March, when this was finalized document, included the approved projects at the time, which was limited to the Los Gatos Lodge project with 155 units.
So are, are only foreseeable, are there only approved projects foreseeable? Or are applications that are deemed complete also foreseeable projects?
At the time that this, the cumulative, excuse me, the initial study was prepared, the cumulative analysis was limited to the approved projects, which at that time was only one of the larger projects. The general planning EIR looked at development on a different scale based on the number of potential units in its cumulative analysis.
Okay, so none of the other builders remedy or SB 330 projects that had, that were deemed complete were analyzed as part of this cumulative?
That's correct.
So I wanted to understand the word cumulative and what does that mean? Because it seems as though we're only looking at the impacts of this project, not the cumulative impacts of the other projects that were foreseeable. So what, how do we define cumulative for the purposes of looking at an EIR?
Thank you for that. I'll introduce Nick Papani from Rainy Consulting, who was the consultant that prepared this document.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Nick Papani, Vice President with Rainy Planning and Management. We were hired by the town to perform the environmental review for the project. Not quite used to sitting down while responding to questions, so I thought I'd stand if that's okay.
No problem.
So, good question with respect to cumulative impacts. The first thing I would say is there's a, there's a point in time at which a cumulative impacts analysis is fixed, right? And for the sequel process, that's if you're doing an EIR, it's when you release the notice of preparation. We didn't do an environmental impact report for this. Our task here was to determine, is this particular project within the scope of what was contemplated in the program EIR for the general plan? So the typical trigger for that would be when the environmental review commences. So we have to kind of fix that, you know, baseline for the cumulative projects at some point in time. And the cumulative is basically understood to be any reasonably foreseeable project. So if there's an application in with the town, that's typically considered to be a reasonably foreseeable project. So, so we would look at those projects that are in the pipeline at the time the environmental review commences. One thing I think, and hopefully this is helpful, but what I've heard, you know, often with respect to these different projects, the builders remedy projects in particular, which of course this is not one. This project's consistent with the general plan and is at the lower end of the density range for the housing element overlay zone. So the impacts from this project were contemplated in the general planning EIR. Your staff did a housing element consistency analysis that looked at, are these site, are these potential sites that are going to be rezoned to housing element overlay zone, are they contemplated in the general planning EIR? And the answer is yes. So this project's potential impacts were contemplated. And so what I've heard is concerns about congestion, and I just wanted to kind of make a distinction that congestion, the state has said, is not a sequel issue, right? There's been a shift from looking at level of service and congestion in environmental documents to looking at vehicle miles traveled. So the question about, did we do an adequate cumulative impact analysis? The question of whether we considered congestion is irrelevant from the standpoint of the state has said you must focus on vehicle miles traveled.
Yeah, I understand that very well. I'm concerned about some of the other things that are looked at in environmental impact, including water supply and sewer and other, other things that are part of the infrastructure. But I wanted to come back to something you said a couple of minutes ago. And that was, there's a point in time at which the projects that are considered to be reasonably foreseeable is fixed. What was that date?
The date, I don't know precisely off the top, but it would have been when we commenced the environmental analysis. I think Mr. Mullen mentioned around...
We entered into an agreement with Rainy, meaning the scope of work and everything was solidified. It appears to be September of '24. The document was finalized, all the reviews and comments had been addressed by March of '25.
Okay, so if I'm not mistaken, this is just off the top of my head, we had over a dozen builders remedy and SB 330 projects that were, their applications were deemed complete at that time, isn't that correct?
Deemed complete, I don't think that's correct.
Okay, what about final?
Final as in we've received a formal application?
A formal, right. I think we used the term final before and then we switched to the term formal.
It's somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or nine, just based on the spreadsheet I have in front of me.
Okay.
Of receipt, receipt of formal application.
Okay, and would those be foreseeable projects?
If there was an application in at the time, not like a preliminary submittal, but a formal application, then typically we would consider those as reasonably foreseeable.
Okay, and then were those eight or nine projects looked at with regard to this project?
Yes, in the sense of the total number of units that are in the, that are reasonably foreseeable right now is 37, 38, well, that's, that's the max that the general planning EIR evaluated, right? It's 3,738 potential units. So all of the projects that are in the pipeline are within that capacity. Much less than that, obviously, there's some additional general plan potential build-out capacity. So, so we have that contemplated in the cumulative impact analysis.
Okay, so if I could follow up, the total number of units was examined. Was the density of this project looked at in the 2040 EIR?
It was, being a housing element overlay site, it was contemplated in the general.
And was the height of this project looked at as well?
That's correct, it was.
Okay, and it's fair to say that height and density might have a bearing on some of the other parts of the EIR, you know, including water, you know, not just traffic, but other elements, that other aspects of the EIR that are looked at?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Water supply, we considered that. We looked at the urban water management plan for the water district. And there's adequate capacity as demonstrated in those documents.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, thank you. I had one with regard to the, the traffic that was looked at. In the report, it talks about LOS. And I'm interested in why that's in there if that's not a sequel requirement, where trips are, a number of trips are looked at with regard to that. And if I'm mistaken, please correct me, but I'm just curious about why we're looking at something and requiring these studies to be done on if all we're looking at is VMT.
Although VMT, as was noted, is the current sequels concept or the concern for traffic. The town still has a serious concern about traffic impact, so we also look at level of service.
But, okay, so we might look at LOS, but is there anything that we can do about that with regard to a particular project?
Yes, we still have, we looked at LOS, but with the project, it didn't even change the level of service. Both before, excuse me, level of service at the, pardon me. With the level of service at the signalized intersection at Garden Gateway and Los Gatos Boulevard is level of service C currently. With the project, would still be level of service C. And the difference was, I think, 1.5 or 1 point, it was a very minimal difference.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Badami?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm aware of the time, and we might want further discussion and, you know, deliberate and make a motion, but we may need to continue it due to the time?
Yeah, so I would just ask if the town attorney, if we were, it seems like there's still some more discussion, potentially some changes that might be requested to the conditions. I would propose that we resume this after our regular meeting concludes. And it would be on the same date, which is June 3rd, correct?
Yeah, so SB 330 does limit the town to five hearings on SB 330 projects. It defines a hearing to be a meeting that's continued to a different date. And so if this were continued to follow the town's regular meeting, that would not constitute a different date. So it's my opinion, it would not constitute a new hearing.
Okay, so to move things along, I move to continue this to after our regular meeting. Councilmember Badami?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will take a quick break before we go right to our regular meeting. So let's try to keep it at five minutes. Okay, we're back in session. Just an announcement that we do have another item, which is the OPEB trust meeting. That will occur after the special meeting. So we can pick up where we left off. We had closed public comment and we were asking staff some questions. And I was following up on some of the suggestions that were made with the applicant. And if other council members have questions, they can jump in first, but I have a couple. So I wanted to follow up on a couple that seem to be questions for staff about the project itself. There was a suggestion to have an additional emergency access or egress, really, to Los Gatos Boulevard. I understand that that was not a requirement of county fire, but was it anything that was ever looked at with the design of the project? Not to allow normal traffic through there, but to allow people not to have to have an evacuation onto Garden Lane and Lark?
Thank you for that question. From a planning perspective, that's not something that we looked at. I can look to the town engineer to see if they have any input.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Gary Heep, town engineer. Yes, in terms of the emergency egress, we don't typically look for things like that. County Fire, who reviews these plans, is typically the one that would look for something like that. They did review the plans, they did sign off on the plans as such, and have provided conditions of approval to address their continued needs on the project.
Okay, thank you. I think this is something we may start to want to look at a little more as the town develops its evacuation plans and start thinking about having two ways to evacuate, which would, I think, maybe require some changes either at the county fire level or at the town level. But since this is a new development, I thought it was worth asking the question about whether it could be easily accommodated in this, in this particular project. And this is not anything that you looked at, is that correct?
That is correct. It does have two means of egress. There are two driveways, which do provide ways to get in and out. You know, I think it was mentioned earlier, if there's a fire that's being addressed and there's a fire truck on one side, there is that secondary access for, for folks to egress and leave the site.
Right, and I think we're really talking about evacuation as compared to egress. You know, where, where's the traffic flow going to go? So the other one was, which I think the applicant was amenable to, and that's to have, whether it's in there now, in the conditions to have construction trucks and equipment enter from Los Gatos Boulevard as long as possible. And then at the north end of Garden Lane, near Rotten Robbie, once it's not possible. Is that something that you think we ought to think about in the conditions to keep the traffic away from some of the other homes?
So there is a project condition number 105, material hauling route. And that is something that we deal with during construction. We ask the applicant to provide us a haul route of specifically how they're going to get from the freeway to the development site and then back out. And we typically make sure that's dealt with so that it's really impacting the least amount of properties and residential areas and that the, that the trucks are getting to and from the site as quickly as possible.
So when you get to that, you might consider the comment of Mr. Stevens about doing it that way?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other questions about the project itself? I had, of course, one, one other one about the project, the architectural recommendations. They were recommended by the planning commission. Are they in the plans now or do those need to be a modification?
Thank you for that question. The applicant provided a separate exhibit showing how they could address those items. They're not in the full plan set, the big thick plan set that you've received. That was, this plan set is what was provided to the planning commission. But they did show how those things could be addressed. And this staff report points out that if that's something that the council is amenable to, then you could direct staff to include a condition of approval that requires that those things be in there since they've been offered by the applicant.
Okay, well, I'd be interested in staff's opinion about those. I know they came from our consulting architect, but I think there were two different views on that. One about the architectural integrity of the entire facade on the Boulevard and being sort of a more streamlined look as compared to being broken up into individual colors and details. Does staff any view on the architect's recommendation that I think the planning commission also recommended?
I can start and preface everything with, I've never taken an architectural class in my, in my life. I learned it all on the job. I think, you know, after looking at plans for, for many, many years at this point, I think the challenge and the caution that I would offer is, I remember one of the directions being considered painting each unit a different color, which could be achieved through varying, slightly varying tones. But if you, if the difference between the colors is too much, it could end up with an unintended consequence of being very busy and lose some of the cohesive nature of the architecture that's been provided. So the applicant has chosen the response that's been put in front of you this evening as a means of further addressing these, these recommendations.
Okay, and so the applicant's drawings that show some detailing or changes, that's not the full recommendation of Mr. Cannon, is that correct?
I'm refreshing my memory here. I'd honestly have to read through them in detail again, but, and I'm happy to circle back on that.
And through the mayor, I think the specific changes don't address all of the consulting architect's recommendations. These were just additional options that they offered specifically for Building A, if I remember correctly. Um, these were just additional options that they offered specifically for, uh, Building A, if I remember correctly.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? I had a few things I would like to go over with, um, CEQA and the EIR, um, because as I think we've identified, this is following a different code for, um, environmental requirements than other ones that we've had so far. And, um, so, the, the concept that this is tiering off the 2040 general plan EIR, concerns me because I, uh, have some questions about whether that EIR, um, is, is really something that has integrity and is valid. So when I look into the actual general plan, uh, final EIR, the 2040 general plan, um, EIR, I see a number of things that seem to be related to the actual land uses that were rescinded. Um, and I also see some things where, uh, aspects were not studied, such as density over a certain amount or height over a certain amount. So I, I'm uncomfortable with saying blanket, yes, the 2040 EIR applies. And I just want to make sure that's on the record, because I do think that there are a number of things, you know, energy impact E1, uh, GE04, um, there's, uh, hazard five. There's a number of them that I think are, that relate to height and, uh, density. And so I, I would like to just kind of go on the record that I'm uncomfortable with a blanket, that 2040 EIR applies, because I think that there may be some gaps, uh, in, um, the applicability of that EIR to, uh, to projects. Now, then it comes to what about to this specific project? And, um, my comment is on this one, while I'm uncomfortable of that pure tiering approach for this project, and if that were the only, um, environmental review that was done here, I would probably not be able to support that, but I do see some additional, um, ways that the environmental impact was reviewed for this particular project in the, uh, the, uh, what is it called? Um, the...
Are you referring to the initial study?
The initial study and the other documents that are part, that are on the website that relate to the checklist of the initial study. And those gave me some comfort that things were being addressed. The other area is that this is a housing element site, and that, um, environmental work was done on, uh, the housing element sites. So while I'm, I'm not comfortable with a blanket tiering off of 2040, in this specific case, um, and particularly since this project is within the height limit that was studied in the 2040, and, um, was within the density limit that was studied, um, I, uh, can get over my concerns about just pure tiering. So just a comment, I, I, I wanted to, you know, particularly since we, um, we have to really pay attention to, uh, the environmental work that's done on all these projects. So, um, any, any other comments, or someone want to try to move this forward? Vice Mayor?
I'll provide a few comments. Um, you know, so I, I know, uh, this area and this, this, uh, project now well. Um, I think, you know, uh, as we've talked about the last week and in weeks past, uh, we have competing priorities we have to deal with. We need a variety of new housing types, but, you know, folks in the neighborhoods where these, um, developments are proposed are concerned about, you know, a variety of things. Um, my actual biggest concern on this one, and I think the biggest concern that I've personally heard, is the existing commercial where we have small, locally owned and well-loved, um, businesses. I, uh, as I already shared, I especially feel, um, for the owners and employees of Genuine Automotive and A Plus Cleaners, um, who, from my understanding, haven't found new places to operate their businesses. I want to just double down, strongly urge the developer and, and their team to proactively work with the existing businesses to help relocate them. Um, and then I, I, you know, heard this evening from folks in the community, um, worries from the neighbors, um, some of whom I've talked to, about, you know, the impacts of the construction while this is going on, the height of the development, not enough parking, increases in traffic. Um, and I think those are, those are legitimate things to be concerned about, um, uh, but I think, you know, one, those are concerns that I think unfortunately are going to exist with, um, almost any change, um, uh, that, that we, uh, have in town. And B, uh, as we've heard this evening and in other meetings, state law limits the degree to which the town can, um, force an SB 330 proposal to make modifications in response to some of these things. Um, I was glad to hear that the highest heights of development are contained within the, uh, internal dimensions. Um, and I do really appreciate Rich Stevens' comments, um, about having construction vehicles not entering the neighborhood for as long as possible. And the other thing I think we didn't, um, haven't talked about a whole lot, is encouraging guests to park along Los Gatos Boulevard rather than Garden Lane. I think that's a legitimate thing to ask, um, especially of, of, you know, um, the future HOA. Um, however, I just, you know, especially with the fact that this is an SB 330 development, I think this is a very reasonable and thoughtful proposal. Um, I think there are a lot of positive aspects to this project. Um, I appreciate that this project does include true green space in the form of a central courtyard. I really like the, um, the Sylvia's, what, uh, cells as a bio swale. I think that's a really good way to, I would, you know, encourage future developers to look at that, because I think a lot of the time, I said this, but you, you get these bio swales that appear when you're looking at the development plans as green space, and they're actually not, they're not really usable. So I think that's a really good way, um, to do that. I also really like the variety of sizes and units. I think, um, a lot of the smaller units will be more naturally affordable, and, um, being a renter that lives in the area, I could see some of those smaller units, um, being the first homes for, uh, existing renters in the community. Um, I, uh, I'm also really glad to see the development, this development bring, uh, live-work units to town. I think that's a really good thought for Los Gatos Boulevard. That's currently a, a commercial space that's getting, you know, uh, several, um, uh, plots of land there are being converted into residential. And so I think the idea of live-work is, is sort of perfect to try there, and I'll be, um, interested to hear how that goes. Um, I really like the architectural enhancements that the Planning Commission, um, made. I think it generally fits the character of the area. And finally, as has been mentioned, um, it largely fits Los Gatos's town code and planning guidelines, um, especially when it comes to, to height and density, which are some of the biggest things we hear about. So, um, I, I just appreciate the thoughtfulness that, that went into this. Um, I, I think that this development, um, does a good job, you know, working with, um, state law and, and also bringing more homes of all kinds, um, for people to live in. Uh, and so I, I think that, um, this is a thoughtful project, and I'm, uh, planning to support it.
Councilmember Badami?
You asked if a council member was ready to move it along, and, uh, I would be happy to move it along. So...
Thank you, you've been moving everything along tonight.
Well, I hate everybody staying so late. Um, and I'm into efficiency. Anyway, we all know this is an SB 330 project. It qualifies under our state density bonus law. It meets affordable housing and associated benefits. Uh, it cannot make any required findings to deny the concessions and waivers. Um, it complies with Government Code Section 6594.1. With that, um, I move to adopt the draft resolution in attachment two to make the required findings and approve the architecture and site conditional use permit and subdivision applications subject to the conditions of approval in attachment two, Exhibit A, with correction to the CEQA guideline section 15188 to 15162. And I would also like to add that the applicant worked with staff to incorporate the changes that they've offered, um, per attachment seven.
Councilmember Ista?
Thank you, I'll second it, and, well, I won't be as comprehensive as Councilmember Moore. I really do appreciate the work this applicant has done. This is the type of thing we planned for in our housing element and, um, the general plan revisions. Um, you've hit the lower end of our density, but you're providing homes that are going to be architecturally pleasing. Um, I like the way the homes will have kind of a front yard with that courtyard. There won't be privacy issues with the neighbors between the fact that they have a giant fence along their homes. Your homes all face inward and toward each other at nice angles. I like the transition that we'll have going from commercial to multifamily to single-family homes. That's kind of great urban design. I appreciate your sustainability approach in terms of, you know, making a bio swale that's also usable space. Um, I think the whole design is very thoughtful. Um, I appreciate, um, that this location, um, as we were setting the housing element sites, of course, as we were looking at properties that were likely to be developed and where property owners said they were interested in being a housing element site, there's always going to be some heartbreak with favorite businesses that are located where the landlord has made a decision they want to change the use. And so I understand Councilmember Moore's concerns. I appreciate the work that you're doing with, um, Jim Foley to see if there's possibilities for other, uh, businesses, but, um, I also think that we know we need this housing. It fits a variety of uses. Um, uh, we're going to have some wonderful people living in our community and living in beautiful homes. And I really like the walkability. People will be able to walk to Trader Joe's, walk to the North Forty as, you know, the market and the restaurants open, get onto the Creek Trail. Um, it's just a, it's a great location for housing, and I think you've done it right, so I'm very happy to second the motion.
Town Attorney?
Um, one question for the council. Did the council want to include the condition that the landscaped area would not be fenced off? Okay.
And I have a, some draft language, or we can leave it in.
Okay, and then one final correction to the CEQA exemption that we're using, it's 15168. Thank you.
Okay, any, any more comments? Councilmember Annie?
Um, I'll, I'll keep it even briefer. So I'll, um, say I appreciate this is one of the better projects. I appreciate that we're keeping it within our, our height limit. I realize, you know, we're looking for some exceptions on setbacks, and we would have preferred more open space. But I think the reality that we're seeing over and over is in order to meet these minimum densities that are required for our housing element aid from the state, basically, that thirty units per acre, we either got to go a lot taller if we want to, or we're going to have to give on setbacks and give on open space. This, this is fortunate that it has a park across the strait, street, so there's lots of open space, but, and that's something for us to consider, you know, we don't like seeing all these exceptions, but in order to get sort of a well-behaved project within this thirty units per acre, we, we're having to give in some of our usual places. So again, I'll just say I appreciate that this is a well-behaved project and one of our, our better projects, and I'll, I'll be supporting the motion.
Um, yeah, just a quick comment. I, I will support the motion. I, um, have some concerns about the environmental work. Um, and, uh, but I do think that in total, the environmental effort on this project, um, meets the requirements. Um, but I, I have, uh, some concerns about the approach, um, the overall approach to cumulative impact, uh, analysis, and, um, on other projects, I'm definitely going to be looking at that closely. Um, I also, one of the other reasons I was able to, uh, move to supporting this is that the environmental concerns that I saw, um, did not, uh, jump out to health and safety concerns as I've seen on, uh, another project, um, where those are, are grounds for denying, um, projects. I did not see, uh, health and safety on this particular project. So, um, with that, um...
Do you want to incorporate, uh, the planning manager's language? I have draft, I have draft language, we can just draft it and, and include it into the resolution for signature.
Terrific. So I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. So thank you for your endurance on this, and, uh, we look forward to seeing a good project there. We have one more item, which is the, uh, OPEB trust. Um, it's actually a separate, it's a separate meeting, yeah. So we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll move to, oh no, I thought it was incorporated in the agenda for this. Was it? No? Oh, we ended up, okay, sorry. Um, so with that, uh, let's, um, open the... This, so I, yeah, I said I adjourned the special meeting. Ah, okay, thank you.